All right. All right, so. Jim, how long do you think it'll take for them to go through their resolution here? You got two minutes? Can we do it in two or? All right, so we're gonna move on to nine A. Approval of resolution approving agreement by and among the city of Mowville, County Woodbury County, and Woodbury Central Community School District regarding Mowville face to Ridge Urban Renewal Area.
Yep, thank you. Chad Thompson, the city attorney from Mowville, here with Jim Fisher. We're just asking that the county agree, along with the city, the school, Woodbury Central School Board approved this last night just to extend the TIF for ten, fifteen years. If it happens that the infrastructure cost gets paid off before then, the TIF will end. And this is for, I believe, the McDy addition.
Sounds good. I think that is a thing that I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Potabom. Any other discussion on it? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Nine B is approval of resolution approving agreement by and among the city of Mowville, County Woodbury, and Woodbury Central Community School District regarding MCDAI addition urban renewal area.
Same, same story. It's just different, different urban renewal area, so.
Sounds good. I'll go ahead and move that.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good work, guys. Appreciate it. All right, I think that puts us to our four thirty-five set time for seven A. Public hearing and sale of property parcel known as twenty-two twenty-four West Palmer Avenue. So we are now in a public hearing for that. Anybody speak for or against the sale of that property? Not bid, but speak for or against it.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second that. So motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick to close that public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. All right, so now we are taking bids for the sale of twenty-two twenty-four West Palmer Avenue.
My name is William Bowens.
William Bowens, you said?
Yes.
And what was your bid?
Uh, one hundred dollars.
All right, that's the minimum, plus hundred plus fees. Anyone else out there? I gotta check my wallet. I might have enough.
Seeing you part with it would be something entirely different.
It's not like it's ice cream for my kids, right? Well, seeing no other bids, I'll move that we sell this property to William Bowens for a hundred dollars plus fees.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. I'll take care of it. The next two are direct sales, so you don't... Yeah, okay. Okay. Now, I think we're good. And let's see, four thirty-seven, just hit it. Public hearing and sale of property parcel for one eleven and a half, Twenty-third Street. This is a direct sale to Julia and Olivia Lesko for one ninety-nine plus fees. Uh, we're now in the public hearing. Anyone to be heard for or against the sale? Any staff opinions on the sale?
Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move we close the public hearing.
I will second that. So motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. And I guess on that, I would just move that we sell this.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to... Oh, gosh, we didn't even take a minute on that. That hand's really close to the nine over there. I think we did...
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. We'll have the public hearing for the sale of property parcel known as forty-four twenty-five Central Street. Uh, anyone to speak for or against that sale?
Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move we close the public hearing.
I will second that. So motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Trying to stretch it out at four thirty-nine. But, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. I'll move the sale, direct sale, to Amanda Raggy of thirty-five hundred plus fees.
I will second.
All right, motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Now onto item ten for secondary roads. Wait, no, excuse me. I'm skipping. Oh, yeah, we've got six minutes for that. So we're going to item ten, secondary roads. Uh, approve the contract and bond for project number parent C two seventy-four with prom, pram, prom, pram, construction for five hundred thirteen thousand one twenty.
Recommend approval of the contract.
Which was this one?
This is on Jewel Avenue.
Okay.
South of D twelve. It's the second structure. This is one that came up at a lot in city-county joint meeting. The individual had a posted structure on either side of part of her farm ground. So with this replacement, we will have to replace both of those problem structures.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
You had six minutes, Mark, and you didn't even use them.
We're efficient here. It's, it's the chairman's inspiration today. Quick on everything. Thank you.
You want this back, then?
Oh.
I got, oh, I missed one. Sorry. Now it's done.
Thank you.
You bet. I'll double-check them all. I think I got them all. All right.
Thank you.
Yep. This is how, I'm gonna fill those six minutes here. There we go. Thank you. All right. What we got, Dennis? Four minutes? All right, item eleven. Board administration approval of resolution approving and authorizing the revised Exhibit C to the lease agreement between Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority and Woodbury County, Iowa.
Okay, what this is, is revising Exhibit C and the lease between the county and authority. What it is, showing the actual cost per year, what the payments will be, the base rent payments on the bond issue we just did. There'll be another one coming up further down the road here. They'll have to do the same thing. So it's just putting this page in. Authority's meeting Thursday to prove it also.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Potabom, second by Raddick. Any other discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Now, we don't have enough time to sign everything you got for us, Jim.
No, but you can draw. Why don't you, Steve, why don't you come forward and let him draw up until four forty-five? You can get your crayons out.
I might ask for your resignation, Pat.
Okay, we've got nine of the township contests where no one submitted paperwork, so it's being decided by write-in. And since they got tied on the number of write-ins, you guys need to draw to see who the winners are. So we'll start with, uh...
There's nine ties?
Yes, nine different townships.
I honestly thought I'd never do this again after that one.
So this is for Banner Township.
Wow.
You draw one.
There you... Who did that? Wow. All right, William Heath Distiger. He's Steacher?
Who is it?
William Heath Disteacher.
Distader?
I don't know.
Uh, the second one is for Grange Township trustee. Also need to draw just one.
Boy, Matthew, you missed out on some fun drawing names out of a Christmas tree basket.
I know. Don't let it get to your head.
Carolyn Lau.
Next one's for the Grant Township trustee. Again, we just need to draw for one.
Derek Cobham.
Next one is for the Little Sioux Township. We had one person that, uh... Had higher number of votes, but we need two people, so we gotta draw for the second one.
Scott Blakely.
Next one, next one's for the Morgan Township trustee. And this one, we have to draw for both of them.
So you want me to draw two out of there?
Yep, gotta draw two out of there.
I don't think so.
Oh, were there three total?
So we got Jason Hammon, Hammond, and Kurt Heinzey. We can, we can bounce back. We got our four forty-five if you're... How many you got left?
Got five left, I think. Four or five.
Okay, we'll just go back to our four forty-five here. We'll come back to this.
Okay.
Thank you. So our four forty-five set time from Building Services, eight A, is receive bids for the Woodbury County Courthouse chiller replacement project. We hear not a lot of them to receive.
Unfortunately, we only received one bid for the project. And I'll read that to you. It was from CW Suter. Uh, their base bid was one million seventy-three thousand seventy-five dollars. Their bid alternate number one was a deduct of forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Their bid alternate two was seventy-four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. That would be an add. And their bid alternate three was two thousand ninety-two dollars. Uh, that also would be an add. Um, and they've included their bid bond. And if we could have a motion to receive...
I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on receiving the bids? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to eight B. I will move to award the bid. Unless you have any other discussion, I guess.
Uh, yes, I've got some discussion. I think you've all received a backup recommendation that we received from Resource Consulting Engineers. We've got Corey Metzger on the phone, who did plan on coming to this meeting this afternoon. However, due to the weather, we thought it best that he try to join us via phone rather than roadway. So, Corey, are you still on the line?
I am here. I appreciate it.
Feel free to butt in at any time. I'm gonna go ahead and get started with this. We met, or Corey reached out to some of the prospective bidders to find out why they didn't bid the project or why we didn't get more bids on this project. Uh, I'll let Corey speak to that in a few moments. One of the, one of the reasons I know was, uh, was due to the opening of the building exterior, exterior envelope. There was some concerns with that. Also, I know when I met with the prospective bidders, they are, they were all very concerned with setting up cranes in the alley for the project and, uh, and, uh, the things that might be an impact there as well. And so to try to, uh, this bid came in a little higher than what we had anticipated. And so I asked Corey to reach out to CW Suter to see if there was anything we could do with this project to get the, to get to, to lower the project cost for the county. Between Corey and CW Suter, they did come up with some ideas. One of the ideas that came up was to eliminate the cooling tower work. Uh, the cooling tower work we're doing is replacing the fill inside the bay of the cooling tower. I rejected that idea right away. I don't care what the, uh, what the cost would have been that was associated with it. It's work that I feel that we need to do if we're doing the project. And so I rejected that as an option. We did have some other options. Option two is to eliminate the buffer tanks and the piping, uh, that extend down into the sub-basement. The projected cost on that savings was twenty-five thousand dollars. Another option savings was to, um, we had a, uh, as far as the bid specs go, we were requiring, um, couplings made by Victolik. And as part of that, a Victolik representative would come in and do an inspection on the installation. And then after the inspection was complete, they would provide a thirty-year warranty on their couplings on all the piping. If we did an alternate and allowed, uh, an alternate coupling company, um, there would be a savings associated with that of thirty-five thousand dollars. Corey Metzger and I discussed that. Uh, we believe both the buffering, tanks, piping, and the Victolik coupling change options, um, are good savings. Uh, and therefore, we, uh, uh, believe that that is the, uh, preferred method to go on this project. So, um, the base bid minus the forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-dollar alternate one brings you down to one million twenty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-five. That is what I have a, uh, a contract amount for you to approve tonight on.
What are the two adds?
Uh, we're, uh, bid alternate number two and bid alternate number three, the adds. We are not going to do either one of those. We don't believe that they're, uh, um, a, a good profit benefit or value for our money. And so...
Yeah. Hey, ready real quick?
Can I get an explanation of why on those? Ultimately, we're supposed to decide that.
Replace the base bid chiller with a dual compressor chiller, which we would have actually expected to be an add. It ended up being a significant deduct. Bid alternate number two would actually take that dual compressor chiller and split the shells, um, on the chiller, the evaporator and the condenser. And what that does is it creates two fully independent refrigeration circuits. So it, it provides a little more redundancy, but it also has some turn-down limitations that are associated with splitting those shells. So bid alternates, the base bid, bid alternate one and bid alternate two are all, you could accept only one of those three with respect to the water-cooled chiller. Bid alternate number one or two would have been our preferred approach. And given the significant cost difference, bid alternate number one was a clear preference there. Bid alternate number three would allow for an alternate manufacturer, a, uh, a non-original equipment manufacturer for components for the cooling tower service work, given that the components from the original equipment manufacturer are lower cost. Um, we, we included that in case it was a significant deduct, given that it's an add. We would not advise accepting it.
Makes sense.
Does that address those?
Yes.
Great.
Kenny, so... Kenny, what's the timeline? What's the expected length of time that this would take?
Our, our plan or our hope is to have this completed in, uh, completed in May and March. Corey, I'll let you speak to the timeline a little bit and the penalties that we put in the contract, if you would.
Yes. So we have liquidated damages on this project for two milestones called out. One would be for March nineteenth to have the first chiller operational. Um, we had a second date listed in the contract of April sixteenth for the additional. One thing that, um, we will look at with the, um, assuming the contract gets approved with the contractor, that, those dates were set up assuming that the air-cooled chiller would be the first machine installed. So, um, I, we spoke back in June and not to waste time with you, but you'll have two chillers now, so you have some additional redundancy beyond what you had before and some better turn-down capabilities. The system should be more reliable long-term. We assumed the air-cooled chiller would be installed first. And it looks very possible that the water-cooled machine may be installed first, and that will basically carry the building on all but the very hottest of days, um, for cooling. So, um, essentially, we've, we've got those dates in the contract. The hope is that they may be able to actually beat that with the water-cooled chiller being installed. Uh, it appears that some of the manufacturers may actually have a shorter lead time than was expected.
And how long does the project expect? I mean, two weeks, three weeks?
Oh, it'll take...
Oh, it'll...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Corey.
Uh, it'll be a few months, because they will have to remove the existing water-cooled chiller from the mechanical room up on the first gale tier of the building. They'll have to remove piping and pumps associated with that. They'll have to open the wall up to allow for that work to happen. And they'll have to bring new equipment in, get the new piping in place. There's also an extension of some structure above the roof for the new air-cooled chiller, um, and then rebuilding the wall. So I would expect that the actual construction work is probably gonna be somewhere in the three to four month range, uh, that we'll see folks on site working.
But a start date maybe in February?
Uh, or sooner.
I, I think sooner.
Yeah.
I, I think you could see the, depending on when a contract is signed, you may see staff in there working in the next few weeks, potentially. Certainly by early December.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? I, I'll stick with my motion of what staff's recommendation was there. Need a second.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt.
And that's for the one million twenty-nine thousand six forty-five?
Yes.
All right, and no other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
Where's that money coming from, Dennis? Are they gonna be CIP or...
CIP, you were to be borrow money and pay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Take care.
You too. All right, Steve, thank you again for patiently waiting.
I'll present the election canvas and stuff here first, and then we'll go back to the drawing of the other four. But, uh, we had sixty-nine provisional ballots that were cast for this election, of which forty-eight of those were accepted, twenty-one were rejected. And then after-election ballots that came through, we had sixty come through, uh, with which eleven were accepted and forty-nine were rejected for various reasons. No signature, late postmark, that kind of things, so. I've got the abstract of votes here for you guys to sign, the certificates of election. And I've also got the book here that has the canvas of the whole election with the signature page here on the top.
All right.
Start one-handed, sign them down.
Then we'll finish the drawing for the other four here. And once I get these finished drawing for, I'm gonna run upstairs and try and get the certificates and the abstracts done for those.
For the book, we just signed this page on the outside, right?
Yes. Yep, the inside just has the, the report, so.
So on the, um, Matthew, you gonna come in and sign all these?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
This only has four lines on it.
Okay, so this drawing is for the Mowville Township. We just need to draw one additional.
Mowville Township. Wally Coons.
Next one is for the Willow Township. We need to draw one.
Do these have to be kept in the same order?
Uh, they don't have to be kept in the same order, but I'd appreciate if you could leave...
Keep them together, yeah.
Lynn Thompson.
The next drawing is for Wolf Creek Township. And this one, again, just need to draw for one.
One like that.
Anthony Ashley.
And this last one's for the Woodbury Township. We need to draw two.
We've got Jacob Gooden and Joe Corey.
That's all we have for the drawing for the winners, so.
So you're gonna sign all these. He's gonna go up and finish the report.
I'll give the certificates and the abstract of votes for the ones that he just drew, so.
All right.
Kenny, you need this or is this yours or who's this? We need a motion to receive for signatures, the canvas.
I will move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any discussion? All those in favor to receive, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. No, I wish, sign it. Does anyone wanna report on a committee meeting?
I have none.
Nope.
Matthew, any committees you met?
No.
No.
That is something, isn't it?
I didn't know if you'd noticed that or not before it passed, thought I'd point it out.
Amanda Rico. There's something fish.
Here comes Rocky's. Matthew, are you practicing signing while we're doing this, or?
Yeah, I can hear your pen scribbling right now, so it's giving me a good indication how to match your signing speed later.
There are two-hundred-and-thirty-two of them, Matthew. So is there any, we'll go onto item fourteen, any citizen concerns? Round two. Anything from the attorney's office?
No.
No concerns there? Fatherhood? Good. Adds no stress to marriage? Good answer. Yeah, I don't know, I was going to board, board concerns. Any concerns, Matthew?
No, happy as a clam.
Rocky, any concerns?
No, sir.
Justin?
The lady's coming with her in the morning. We got a nail on her back and pretty much table on that. You got the timeline now, is ready to get it out?
Got anything? You moved your hand. Yeah. Any concerns from Marty?
Nope.
Matthew, did I already ask Matthew? I did?
Yeah, I said I was happy as a clam.
All right.
I'm gonna need you guys to pass all those papers in front of the camera, so I can verify what we're doing here.
Okay.
You ready? We'll toss them all up in the air, get ready for it.
Ta-da. That's the last one, or, well, except for he's got, what, nine more coming down the steps here in a minute? All right, well...
Us all those certificates.
Oh, he gets to hand those certificates too.
We should sign those first, our signatures might look recognizable.
We don't need to stay in session for that, right? We can just adjourn and keep signing?
Adjourn and just keep signing.
All right, you guys are free, we're adjourned. Matthew's gonna be signing...
Gonna go lefty.
He's gonna spread like two-hundred-and-twenty-nine cases...